Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will call to order. First thing I will ask for is a roll call. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, so first up, we have Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the bylaw. Moved by Counselor Hall and seconded by Counselor Turner. The procedural bylaw 2010-1 as amended be waived in order to amend the council agenda to add the closed session item entitled Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations Kingston Professional Firefighters Association as outlined in the addendum.
If everyone could vote again. And that carries.
The council resolved itself into the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting to consider the following items. A, Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations, QP Collective Agreement. B, Education or Training of Members pursuant to Section...
So, can I just interrupt? So, can we just pay attention? Thank you. Yes, continue, Madam.
Yes, Dad.
Don't make me come over there.
B, Education or Training of Members pursuant to Section 239 Bracket 3.1 of Municipal Act 2001 Code of Conduct and Role of Council. C, Advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, SMG Canada ULC contract. And Item D, Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations Kingston Professional Firefighters Association, KPFFA.
Please vote. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju waseya kuekwe. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as the gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. So, we were just meeting in Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting. We discussed various topics, including labor relations or employee negotiations for QP and the firefighters. We had an education session with respect to the Code of Conduct and Role of Council, and also discussed an item subject to solicitor-client privilege, the SMG Canada ULC contract. So, with that, I will ask for a motion to waive the rules, and it's the clerk to report, please.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Turner. The council rise from the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting and that the rules of bylaw 2010-1 be waived, and the clerk report.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Turner. A, that council ratify the collective agreement and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement between the Corporation of the City of Kingston and the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 109 for the period January 1, 2017 to December 31, 2020. There's a typo there, my apologies. And B, that council ratify the collective agreement and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement between the Corporation of the City of Kingston and Kingston Firefighters Association Local 498 for the period January 1, 2015 to December 31, 2017.
And that carries. Okay, so, moving on, we have approval of the added. We have an amendment to Item A from the CAO Consent Report. In addition, Item G, an item from Planning Committee, a new motion, and some communications and bylaws. Can I get a mover and seconder for the added? Please move by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Turner. Please vote. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Holy smokes. Okay, so we'll start over here. Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I, Ryan Bowman, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 1, 2, 3, and 4, Para 10, and related bylaws, Report Number 13, as an employee of Utilities Kingston. It may be perceived that I have pecuniary interest in these matters, as well as related bylaws 14, 15, and 16. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cannon.
Thank you through you. I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number 9, as my wife works for Homebase Housing. Also, I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in Clause C in Report Number 8 and Report Number 10, as I am a licensed realtor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you. I, Jim Neal, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 4, Report Number...or Bylaw 16, regarding approval of Hospital Foundation 2017 budgeted transfer, since my stepdaughter is an employee of KGH.
Thank you. Counselor Ossanik.
I, Lisa Ossanik, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Motion Number 2, as the motion calls upon the Minister of Health, and I am employed by the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care.
Thank you. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, worship. I, Mary Rita Holland, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 4, Report Number 13, and Bylaw 16, with respect to the approval of the KEDCO budget requisition, as my employer Keyes Job Centre regularly partners with KEDCO.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. I, Rob Hutchison, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 4, Paragraphs 2A, 2B, and 10, specifically with respect to Community Services Administration Employment Assistance for Employment Support Expenses and Community Services Housing and Social Services Rent Supplement and Nonprofit Housing Providers, as my employer Kingston Corporate of Homes Inc. participates in the city's affordable housing program, and his...and my spouse's employer provides a literacy program to Ontario Works respectively.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, worship. I, Peter Stroud, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number 13, Clause 4, Paragraphs 5 and 10, and Bylaw 16, approval of the Kingston Community Health Foundation 2017 budgeted transfer, as I am a current employee of KGH.
Okay, seeing no other disclosures of potential pecuniary interest, we will move on. We have no presentations. This evening, we do have one delegation. Ryan Haynes will appear before council to speak to Clause A of Report Number 8 received from the CAO with respect to the Bell Park Working Group update. And Mr. Haynes, just a reminder, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ryan Haynes. I am the current president of the Kingston Pickleball Club. Mayor Patterson, councilors, on behalf of our club, would like to thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening in regards to the Bell Park Working Group update. We would like to speak to Clause A of Report Number 8. The Kingston Pickleball Club is strongly in support of the working group's further exploration of outdoor recreational opportunities at Bell Park. Specifically, we would value being a part of this process, as we believe this is an ideal location for a designated pickleball facility. Pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports in North America, with participation in Canada going from approximately 6,000 players in 2011 to over 20,000 in 2015. During that same time, Kingston has gone from a handful of players to over 200 active participants. All across the country, facilities are not keeping up with the growth of the sport. Our club believes we have a tremendous opportunity for Kingston to get ahead of the curve and establish itself as a hub for pickleball in Ontario. By building a designated lit facility of at least 12 courts, we will position ourselves to host large tournaments, such as provincial and national championships, as well as establishing annual club-run competitions. We see this as having substantial positive impact on the local economy, as your typical pickleball player has ample disposable income and tends to attend these events early and stay longer. Bell Park is an ideal location for such a facility, benefiting from its ease of access to downtown hotels and restaurants and the 401. There is sufficient parking and washroom facilities already in place. When you add the natural beauty of the park, we believe the facility could be spectacular. It is our hope that Kingston will follow the lead of other communities like Kamloops, Kelowna, Edmonton, Calgary, Fredericton, and Shettyac in building designated pickleball courts, and that we take it one step further, establishing ourselves as a premier location for pickleball play in Ontario, attracting visitors and new residents alike to our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on, we do have two briefings this evening. First, our CAO, Gerard Hunt, will provide some introductory remarks, and then we'll hear from Terry Young, Vice President of Conservation and Corporate Relations, independent electricity system operator, who will provide a briefing to council with respect to the LDC Target Champion Award awarded to Kingston Hydro. CAO Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and members of council. Season's greetings, as we start into this evening. I'd like to call Jim Keach to come forward, as well as Mr. Terry Young. Terry is the Vice President of Conservation and Corporate Relations, responsible for managing the independent electricity systems operators' external relationships, as well as their conservation activities. This includes supporting local distribution companies, such as Kingston Hydro, in the delivery of safe...of save-on-energy programs and achieving the goals of the Conservation First Framework. Mr. Young is attending tonight to present Kingston Hydro Corporation with the LDC Target Champion Award, based on 2011 to 2014 results, which were some of the best in the industry. Mr. Young.
So, I did...there was a bit of a...oh, there is one. There we go. Yeah, okay. So, I thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I do have a bit of a presentation I'll get through quickly, because I really...the main purpose of my visit tonight is to really recognize the leadership of Utilities Kingston and Jim and his staff. I mean, they've been terrific in terms of moving the conservation programs into the community, and I'll speak to that in a few minutes. Very quickly, the...we're an organization that essentially looks after the reliability of the power system. We plan for supply. We look at what the demand for electricity is going to be, and then through the procurement of resources and the achievement of conservation programs, we manage that demand for electricity. If you look at the province at a whole, you'll see that what we have is really enough supply now to manage or to meet the needs that are there. A decade ago or so, we would not have been in this position. We would have been calling on our neighbors to the south to help us meet demands for electricity during high-peak days in the summer. And right now, we've, you know, invested in the infrastructure necessary to provide a cleaner end and a system that is largely self-sufficient. If you think about demand for electricity, we've seen it declining over the past few years for a number of reasons. The economy obviously shifted in some of the way industries are using electricity. We're also having a lot more embedded generation, so utilities like Utilities Kingston and across the province have more embedded generation in their system. We also have a very diverse supply mix to meet those needs for electricity. You'll see, and this is really a reflection of how much the system has changed over the past decade. You'll see in 2005, we would have been spending a lot of...or having a lot of a commitment from coal, and we've taken all of the coal facilities out of the...out of the system, and what you see now is a increased dependence on more renewable sources like wind and solar. You also have nuclear and hydro and gas that's also helping to meet those needs. Looking at price, you know, in terms of the investment that we've made over the past decade to improve the generating infrastructure, it does help explain why we're seeing the prices that we're seeing, and you'll see, you know, what is making up some of the costs that are associated with one of the charges under global adjustment. In terms of...the good news is, is that if we look at out over the next, not just 18 months, in the 18-month period, and we do produce a report that we post every quarter that looks at what the reliability of the system is, and you'll see that over the next year and a half, we have a pretty positive supply outlook, with enough generation and enough contribution from customers to help meet the needs that are there. We're also looking at any growth that we see in the system, being offset by conservation savings through the introduction of programs, like the one that Utilities Kingston have introduced here. We also produced, as part of the province's long-term energy plan, a report that kind of sets up what the next 20 years look like. It's called the Ontario Planning Outlook, and in that report, we looked at four different demands for electricity. Everything from...it's kind of staying, this is the option B or the second from the bottom, and you'll see that in that, that growth in electricity is pretty flat. You also have two higher growth scenarios, where with the carbon plans and the Climate Action Plan that the government is introducing, we could see increased electrification, and that you can see those two top scenarios would see the impacts. Largely, though, if we look at our supply resources and what we're counting on from conservation and other resources, you would find us in a position over the next decade that we should be able to meet the needs. It's in that second half of that 20-year planning period that we would need to look for new resources. But really, what I wanted to speak about tonight, and again, recognize the leadership of Jim and his team, is really around what the government and what the ISO and what the LDCs have done with respect to conservation. We've been doing this for a number of years, and you'll see by this slide that we've had, you know, 10 billion kilowatt-hours of electricity savings in the past 10 years. We've got programs for homes, we've got programs for businesses, very extensive programs that are being offered by utilities like Utilities Kingston. So, we have two frameworks that...one framework that we just concluded, which was...and then we're now replaced by the Conservation First Framework, that the utilities are delivering and designing their programs to deliver. But what I wanted to do really was, as I mentioned, recognize the leadership of Jim and his team. The team at Utilities Kingston has worked closely with their customers to achieve significant energy savings over many years, and by helping make businesses and homes more sustainable, Utilities Kingston efforts are benefiting the entire community here. And so, I am pleased, Jim, to present you with this award that recognizes the success. Utilities Kingston, we had targets in the last framework, and Utilities Kingston achieved 124% of their energy savings target and 113% of their demand target through the 2011-2014 framework. I can tell you that of the 75 LDCs that were doing this, this is pretty rare for LDCs to hit over 100% in both energy and demand, and so I think it's a testament, really, to not just the leadership of Jim and his team, but it's really...it's a demonstration of the relationship I think they have with this community, that they have worked so closely with the...with members of this community, residents, businesses, industry, et cetera, to get the savings, because when you do this, you know, when you do become more energy-efficient, you know, it is...you're winning, the customer's winning, we, as the system operator, are winning, because what you're doing is reducing the need for us to build and manage more assets in the future. And so, you're reducing your own current costs, but you're also reviewing future system costs, and you're helping us reduce the strain on the system. So, with that, I want to congratulate Jim for this award, and thank you very much for all of this. Thank you. Just want to make a couple of comments. First, I'm kind of going to go out of my sort of boring, mundane presentations and say, this is a really big deal for Utilities Kingston. This is...this is something that we are very, very proud of. You know, Terry made the comment, there are 73 LDCs. We are one of very few that achieve these targets. We didn't just achieve the targets, we went beyond the targets. And there's, I would say, four thank yous that I want to make fairly quickly. I guess maybe not thank yous, four things that I want to recognize that I think helped us to succeed this, and a couple of those will be thank yous. The first one is our model that we have here at Utilities Kingston, the fact that we've got electricity, gas, water, sewer altogether, and we talked a little bit about this with Terry earlier on, and how that connects with our customers, and actually, Terry mentioned that it's some of the things that the province is looking at being able to do, particularly from the electric and gas, and may use us as a bit of a model for that, so I think that is very key. Secondly, and this is where I get into thank yous, I want to thank our customers. We didn't do this. We didn't achieve the savings. We helped, but it was the customers of Kingston Hydro Utilities Kingston, and not just electricity, gas, and water as well, that contacted us. We went out, talked to, implemented the programs. They reaped the savings, but they were what made us successful. Third is the employees that I have here. Steve and his team, I think you recognize Steve, Brianna, Caitlin, Hugh, and Jared. I was talking with Jared. Jared actually jumped ship and left us, so that's why I'm having trouble, but he came back for the celebration tonight. And finally, to Terry, to come here and recognize us. Is that a number of larger...of large utilities that weren't necessarily as successful to come here to Kingston to one of the smaller ones, make the comments on what that he did, very much appreciated. And I think also thank you to his team, because it is the leadership from the ISO that we look to in establishing these programs. I think it paid huge benefits to the community for the past programs that we implemented, and looking very much forward to next, and as always, thank you to council for the support.
That's great. Thank you very much, and congratulations again. That's great. Okay, moving on, we have our second briefing. We invite Ruth Nordgraf, Executive Director of Sustainable Kingston, to provide a briefing with respect to Clause B, Report Number 8, from the CAO, with respect to the Sustainable Kingston Plan Implementation.
I think this is an excellent segue, actually, in our presentation. I know it was this, like, scheduled. Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to also brief you on Sustainable Kingston's accomplishments in 2016, but more importantly, our plans moving forward. I believe it's the last council of the year, so it's wonderful to be on here today. So, tonight, I wanted to talk about our 2016, that really, for us, meant a lot of positive transition and a renewed focus, and I wanted to share some of the progress that we are making on the four initiatives that we are working on, and obviously, a look ahead and the strategic plan that we have identified moving forward. As most of you know, Sustainable Kingston was initiated, actually, here, within the city, by developing a Sustainable Kingston Plan back in 2010, and in 2000...sorry. That's probably better. Sorry about that. And with that, obviously, in 2012, Sustainable Kingston was incorporated with the initial purpose to implement the Sustainable Kingston Plan. Between 2012 and 2015, the focus of the organization was on running events and activities in the very broad scope of the Sustainable Kingston Plan, and as you know, we identified the four pillars of sustainability, and tried to really work on the integration of those four pillars within our community and moving towards a more sustainable community. Those years have been wonderful, to really work with the plan and to focus...or to further understand our community, and this year, we've really taken our experience and kind of looked at our plan and looked at the focus that we really wanted to bring into our organization, and I'm really happy to share some of that work with you tonight. So, I will start with our strategic plan. The plan will be on our website early next year, January 2017. First of all, with kind of the understanding and the learnings of the Sustainable Kingston Plan in the last few years, and some of the opportunities and initiatives that we have been started to work on, we also, as boards and staff and volunteers and community partners, realized that we needed to change our mission. You can read the mission here. Sustainable Kingston's mission is to enhance the livability and resiliency of our community. And how do we do that? We do that by sharing knowledge and providing resources and programs that drive true community action. So, we're trying to move away from running events and activities that are very important, but are also not necessary always, creating that measurable impact that we want to create through our organization, and work more towards being the convener, the researcher, the measurer, and the organization that is running programs that are needed, because they're not in place yet. We also set some goals moving forward. We are aiming, in the next four years, to become the Knowledge Centre on Sustainability. We are going to develop and implement a system for measuring and reporting on sustainability. We are going to successfully encourage and assist businesses and institutions to operate in the most sustainable way, and I think we just heard an excellent example of what is already happening in our community. And we are supporting the community in learning about sustainability and taking actions to become more sustainable. So, what does that mean? I just wanted to share some of the initiatives that we are working on and try to illustrate. So, obviously, our core business still, one of our main initiatives, is working with the Sustainable Kingston Plan, and the city has been supporting us with that financially and in kind. So, obviously, our Sustainable Kingston Plan has been a wonderful document that helped us guide kind of the sustainability journey in our community, but in the last year, we also learned that we have to focus, as I mentioned. So, although we're not going to, obviously, we still think explaining sustainability with the four elements, economic, cultural, social, and environmental, is still really important, we also have brought in six priority areas that will help us to focus, and you can see them up here. This year, we've worked on our first annual Community Sustainability Report. It... It will be printed, it's probably on the press, and you will receive a copy, obviously. This report is how we want to move forward. We want to use the six priority areas to, first of all, identify what is going well in our community and celebrate the success, but we also want to identify where we still see some challenges and, and also opportunities in our community, again, using the lens of these six priority areas. Moving forward, next year, we will work with the community to identify goals in each of these six priority areas, and also develop a way to measure. So we'll, we'll start to ask questions, like, how do we become an, a community that is, that has a sense of community, and how do we measure that? Moving forward, our Community Sustainability Report will be our annual results, and although this year it's a fairly narrative with wonderful stories of community partners, moving forward, it will be more of a, a way to measure how we're doing and, and celebrate success, but again, also point out where we're, where, where we can improve. So some other initiatives. As I mentioned, we transitioned in many ways, we also moved to a new office space, and we, we branded that office space as the hub for community change, or the hub. When we were doing our search for an affordable, accessible, and flexible office space for a small not-for-profit, we realized that there was really a challenge for those organizations. So when we were able to secure our locations, we also looked at ways to bring other organizations in. So we have a not-for-profit coworking space, and we know that they are popping up here and there in our community, and I think it's a really interesting shared economy initiative that is happening, and we want to be part of that, and we are part of that, by actually providing that opportunity for the not-for-profit sector. And in addition to the actual space, we also provide capacity building opportunities and really opportunities to connect and network. And as you can see on the screen, we've been successful to actually house two small not-for-profits in our space, have been able to leverage some of our funding and save money on our own lease expense, and we've also reached out to many organizations. Our goal for next year would be to double that, to have more people using our space, and also to kind of focus on that, that challenge that we found, and kind of the, the idea of the kind of the, the need for a good environmental scan of our not-for-profit sector, because although nobody can really tell me how many not-for-profit organizations there are in Kingston, with a little bit of a quick scan, it seems like we have hundreds of community groups and organizations that can really benefit from more efficiency and shared resources. Then we also are piloting and launching our Sustainable City Lab. Again, with the six priority areas in mind, we want to provide a, and brand and share some of the wonderful community research that we can do and are already doing sometimes within, you know, not necessarily sharing that research. We want to connect various students of all walks of life, so not just post-secondary, but everybody that wants to explore a community problem in the priority areas. And we want to create intergenerational and interdisciplinary, community-based research teams. Sounds like a mouthful, but it's something that is happening in many other communities very successfully, and it's really kind of talking about the open governance piece, it's really bringing people together. And it's a pilot, so our aim next year is to do one research for every priority area and report back to you through the annual Sustainability Report. Last, and this is what I've been sharing with you and council a couple of times already this year, as you know, we've launched a program, the Green Economy Kingston Program, and it's really nice to see our staff and board and here supporting us. We've hit our target, which I think is amazing. As you know, it's a program that helps the business community to reduce their carbon footprint, and we have nine members as of December. And as you can see, it's a very nice variety and diversity of members, and it's, it's truly amazing to see how excited they are about actually measuring their carbon footprint and moving forward. Just again, in this slide, you would not have seen a couple of years ago, we've been able to, to use our funding, and, I mean, we still really need that support, to also leverage additional funding. So through our membership with the Green Economy Kingston Program, for instance, we are receiving membership money, and, and obviously, that's, that's really important for a not-for-profit organization to innovate and to find other ways to, to receive funds. But more importantly, of this slide, I want to share that, as you, with the nine members now voluntarily, or the nine members that joined the program, most of them will be able to set a baseline of their existing carbon footprints, and we can share the journey in this community with how they are going to reduce their carbon footprint. So it's a wonderful example of true measurable change and really working towards a sustainable community. We also ban events through the program, and again, as you can see, numbers are going up. We've engaged in, are close to 350 people through our events in the last year, and again, next year, we're hoping to see those numbers even go higher. I know I only have 10 minutes, and I'm almost done. I just wanted to share that through our organization and through the year of 2016 moving forward, we've really increased our focus and really have moved away from running activities and events and developing programs that are really measure, making some measurable change in our community. We're not there yet, it's an ongoing, like, process, and we will probably keep coming back here to share how we're doing. We also want to have that conversation with our community partners, but it's really moving into a more meaningful, measurable way. As I said, programs that have a measurable impact, potential to leverage funding, and lastly, we are really looking at how we're, how we are connecting and convening and celebrating our community and working towards a more resilient and livable community. That's it. I wish you all very happy holidays and wonderful 2017.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Neal.
Thank you, Ruth. Quick, couple of quick questions. I know that you've moved, and it's great to see that you're sharing that space with other community groups. How is that reflected in kind of your net lease obligations? Have you been able to reduce your lease payments and just kind of ballpark of, of how that compares now with earlier?
So, and I would just kind of go back to the slide, but we, so this year, or, I mean, we moved in in June, through the current two nonprofit members and some of the fees we receive from rentals of our boardroom and our space, we've been able to reduce our existing rent line with 25%. Already, by moving to another space, we were able to reduce a little bit of our rent line, not significantly, but a little. And then, as I said, our aim for 2017, because, yeah, is to add, to reduce it with another 25%, we have room for two more.
And I appreciate also what I think I see in your slides, which is a greater financial involvement of your partner organizations as well. And it's a good step towards making Sustainable Kingston more sustainable itself, so I appreciate that.
Yes, well, thank you, absolutely.
Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. I recall you mentioning there that you were able to leverage some money from the other levels of government, and I know the city invested in Sustainable Kingston, and I'm just wondering about how much more money have you brought into the community as a result of your existence, say, from the province or from the federal government?
Sorry, can you clarify your question?
Sorry, as a result of the city's investment in Sustainable Kingston, we were able to get some money from Trillium, if I seem to recall, and other things. I'm just wondering, how much money were you able to bring into the community as a result of our investment with you?
So where we started with almost 100% city funding in 2012, we are now in 2017, moving into a more of a, I would say, 40%, 35, 40% city, and the rest is Trillium funding, federal government, membership fees, hub revenue. So we're definitely moving to the, to a different game. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so moving on, do we have any petitions to present this evening? Seeing none, we do have one motion of speedy recovery, moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Stroud, that the thoughts and best wishes of Kingston City Council be extended to Doug Knapp, as we wish Doug a speedy recovery from a recent fall. For over 30 years, Doug has been a driving force behind the development of urban and rural trails and pathways in the city of Kingston. The city appreciates Doug's vision and dedication pursuing this worthy endeavor. So we call the vote. And that carries. We have no deferred motions. Onto reports. First, I'll ask for Report Number Eight from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor George, that Report Number Eight from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So just a couple of notes. Item A and G are amended based on what is in the addits. Item C has been separated for Counselor Camden's peculiar interest. Are there any other separations? Seeing none, we will vote on, Counselor Hutchison?
I wasn't quite sure. I wanted to say A and B.
A and B?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so seeing no other separations, we will first deal with the balance, which would be Item D, approval of an application for brownfield property tax financial assistance, 661 Montreal Street. Item E, renewal of the service level agreement between the City of Kingston and the Kingston Association of Museums, Art Galleries, and Historic Sites, and approval of the project and operating grant recommendations for the 2017 City of Kingston Heritage Fund. Item F, appointment of alternate acting city clerk. Item G, annual amendment to fees and charges by law 2005-10. Still one person to vote. And that carries. Thank you. Onto Item A then, Bell Park Working Group update. Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question to staff. This past year, we've relocated two, two holes in order to follow through on our commitments to, to native peoples. I was just wondering how much that affected the, the playing of golf and the revenues there from, if we have an idea.
Mr. Falwell.
Through you, Your Worship. The timing of the construction was such that we had a, just a small lag in terms of the playability of the new number four golf green and number five tee decks. We had some temporary situations in place to allow that to continue. I can't confirm or that we had more or less play as a result of that.
Thank you. I just note that we still increased the number of rounds, so we did some good things here. So I just wanted to comment that I, that hopefully, if we pass this recommendation, that staff will take a careful look at the situation with, with golf and, and the other considerations, which are not necessarily in conflict. So it was, we had a presentation with pickleball, for instance. So I just, we went through this long, strenuous consultation with the public, shall we call it, last year, and I hope that we'll continue to seriously consider the golf option. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Just two quick questions. First, it's my understanding that there have been some 2017 memberships sold. Is that accurate? And will we, regardless of how this plays out, will we still be able to respect that commitment we made to the 2017 golfers who have signed on?
Mr. Falwell.
Through you, Your Worship. Yes, there was a incentive for current members to purchase at this year's rate to play in 2017, and it's certainly our intention to operate Bell Park as a golf course in 2017 in honor of those memberships.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My other question is regarding the addits. I know that it's, this just came on before us now. So my question is, how time-sensitive is the motion that's before us? And will there be a full opportunity to advertise and, and solicit new members necessary to be added to the, to that?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the intent with what's added for council is to enable the individuals that have been involved in the process in the past year to be able to complete the public consultation process and be involved with staff, because they're, they're obviously the group that has come to that conclusion that we should be looking at other options as well for the Bell Park property. So in terms of timing, we need to make sure that, one, we can confirm those members, but also feel there, there is currently one vacancy, so fill that vacancy. And we also want to make sure that we get this process underway fairly soon, so that we can report back to council probably around mid-year, so that should there be any changes in terms of budget implications, we can do that in time for the 2018 budget.
So if I understand what, what was just committed to, early in January, we'll be able to do those required appointments, and the, and the advisory group can continue with their work to come up with recommendations? And what kind of, I know there's a mention of public consultation, what kind of public engagement do you foresee happening in this process?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I assume that the clerk's office will follow the same process in terms of filling the vacancy, and that will happen early in 2017. In terms of actual public engagement, we haven't determined yet the details. We would want to continue to work with the working group to identify what they feel are, are good approaches in terms of public engagement, but I would anticipate that there would be a combination of social media as well as in-person, public meeting type of engagement.
Thank you.
Counselor Turner.
Yes, and thank you through you, Mayor Patterson. I have a question for staff. In terms of this park, where does it fall in cost compared to other parks within the city of Kingston in terms of subsidies that, that we give from the city?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So this park, because of its operation in terms of a golf, golf course, has a fairly high subsidy, and, and which typically we don't have in our other parks, which are more passive parks. So the, the cost to not only maintain the, the golf course is there, but also to operate it, so we need to have staff that are on-site and operating, obviously, Bell Park. So we do have some higher costs at Bell Park, for example, than what we would see in a passive type of park where people just come in and, and use the amenities in the parks.
Okay, thank you. And what I've been reading lately is that golf is on the downswing. Do you have any information about that, and will that be in your report?
Mr. Falwell.
We have seen, certainly in our membership, when we've talked to other local golf courses as well, they've seen a bit of decline. It's something that we would present in terms of our final recommendation. I don't have exact numbers now for the last, last 2016 year, but that's something we could certainly provide to council.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Stroud.
From what I heard from staff's response to Counselor Neal's questions, and, and because of the fact that this, well, from what I heard is that the, we need to get moving on, on this in the new year and have a plan for on this in the new year and have a plan for next budget period. But the recommendation, the very first clause, is to...mentions eliminating golf activity. And from my reading of the report and from the correspondence I received on the subject, it seems like there's no consensus in the working group on that score at this time. And because this is on the addits, I feel like the perception might be that we're rushing this through if we vote on it tonight. So for that reason, I'd like to move deferral of the item to the first meeting in February to allow for further information gathering by members of council.
Okay. So there is a motion to defer. I think that as a point of order, this motion is not on the addits. Just the clause with respect to the nomination process is on the addits, so I think that should be clarified. That being said, a motion to defer is in order. If there's a seconder, seconded by Counselor Holland, this is to defer to the first meeting Any debate with respect to time or place? Counselor Turner?
I'd like to ask staff if this is time-sensitive, because if we're asking about the budget and going forward, I'd like some information about that.
Can I get an answer from that? Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So if this is not considered by council until February, and should we be able to proceed in any way? In terms of membership, we're looking at a month or two to have members, so we would not make the 2018 budget consideration if we do want to actually have public consultation.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote on the motion to defer. And that loses by a vote of three to nine. Okay, so seeing no other speakers, Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
Yes, your worship, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I thought I would just take the opportunity to mention that I did call one of the members of the working group this afternoon, and she was very clear that there's a wide diversity of opinions about what the future of Bell Park should look like among the working group. But within that realm of different opinions, there was unanimity in the importance of having that public consultation, having that discussion. And I think it's important to clarify that that's all this motion is asking for, is to have that discussion. This is very different from the last time that this item came before council, when it was brought by staff, and it really was motivated more out of budgetary concerns. This is really very different. This is being put forward by a working group of community members, asking for an exploration of are there other uses that might make good sense at Bell Park. So I think for that, I think it would be very important for council to support this. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
Okay, so we will call the vote on item A. And that carries by a vote of eleven to one. Item B, Sustainable Kingston Plan Implementation. Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say that we're still in the process of process, so to speak, with this file of Sustainable Kingston Plan Implementation, as the presenter indicated. And I just wanted to voice my concern that we're still seeing a long way from measurables and what we could or are succeeding, actual activities that we are actually managing to reduce, say, greenhouse gases. And we've got some pieces in place, unlike...which is good, which we haven't had really in the past, to the same degree, and I applaud that. But I just want to give this initiative a push, because without measurables, we can't really know where we're at and whether we're actually succeeding. And we didn't...in our last climate action plan, we did not meet...we actually got a little...we did not meet our targets. So we need to do that. Climate change is a real problem, and at the level of every municipality, every jurisdiction, we have to be making some kind of improvements, or the fallout is grim. I'll just point out a couple of things, not in our jurisdiction, because we have a limited effect to some degree, is, for instance, on the New York Times supplement, "Climate Change Affects Results," or something to the effect of "Climate Change Affects Fort McMurray Fire." That had to do with the drying out of the forest and allowing forests to be close to houses, and you saw the result. Also, in terms of drying out of the West Prairies, there's the effect of the unlogical pine, of the pine beetle, and the effect, loss of lumbering and pulp and paper economics, economic activity. So it's very real, climate change, and we need to do our bit. And we have had this in front of us since, I don't...can't remember when, but for a considerable amount of time. It seems to me it's been around since I've been on council. We need to make some...we need to make some progress, and we need to actually say how many solar panels we've managed to facilitate in addition to what was happening. We need to be able to say this is how we are cutting greenhouse gases. You know, how many wind turbine installations there are, something that actually points to a decline in greenhouse gases. So I just wanted to say that. I'm going to vote for this, because I think there's some good people involved, some good staff, and staff are...people in Sustainable Kingston mean what they say, but I really would like to see some more concrete results. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll call the vote on clause B. And that carries. Clause C, Initiation of the Brownfield Tax Increment-Based Redevelopment Grant for One Twenty-One Queen Street Anna Lane Condominiums. We will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, onto report number nine from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm, that report number nine from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so there are two clauses. Number one is a social infrastructure fund rental housing project allocations. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I just want to express my sincere thanks and appreciation for this, the work that has been involved in putting this together. I think what's most remarkable about the ability to leverage funds from other levels of government here, from what we're looking at in this report, is that we have two examples of supportive housing, which is exactly where the funds from other levels of government should be going, in my view, in that so many people who are struggling these days with being precariously housed and living in poverty, those people require social service supports, they require healthcare investment, they require a lot of counseling and addiction services. And so both Don House and Addiction Mental Health Services can be looked at as examples of the Housing First strategy before it even became adopted, or before it was even popular, in that their success relies on ensuring safe, secure, you know, longer-term housing options for people who are in crisis. So for all those reasons, I am very much in favor of this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Not to be the Grinch that stole Christmas, but I just have a quick question to ask about this wonderful donation. I just wanted to check and make sure with staff that all the due diligence has been done with the Don House, and the neighbors are happy, and everybody's in good shape. And I know the grant's coming, and that's great. I'm really excited about that.
Mr. Leibman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure I can a hundred percent answer that question in its entirety, but I can report that all the appeals that were filed at the OMB have been dealt with adequately. And I know that Don House has held their own open houses and such, and planned to do so with the neighbors to ensure that they are a good neighbor and they get off on the right foot.
That is great news. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll call the vote on clause one. And that carries. Number two, Investment in Affordable Housing Extension and Maiden Kingston Rent Supplement Program Funding. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I just have a couple of questions, I guess, sort of the history is spelled out here in the report, but just to get a little bit more context. So the first question is regarding the investment in affordable housing funding and the integration with the Maiden Kingston funds. So they're integrated, but they're being separated and used for different purposes. Is that to do with the chronology of the introduction of these funds, or is there like a strategy...or I should say...I mean, I guess, first of all, the question is, is this a way of using the funds that are available, that we were first providing as a municipality that are now being supplemented or provided by another level of government?
Mr. Leibman?
Through you, your worship. Two answers to that question. First of all, the first reason is to ensure that because of the tight timelines for the provincial funding that need to be dealt with by the end of March, in order to be able to find that number of rent supplements in the community is quite a challenge. So by switching these funding programs, we ensure that we do not lose provincial funding to go towards rent supplements. The second purpose, though, is more to the point of the question, which is how can we use the funds in the best way possible, and providing additional time by which we can devote it to the Housing First clients in our shelters, so that we're ensuring that instead of just chronologically ensuring that the next person on the waitlist gets a rent supplement, that we can ensure that the persons with the highest acuity and who can be most helpful to get the rent supplements, we ensure that the money goes towards those clients, so that we can open up our shelters and make sure shelter users, the chronic users of our shelter system are being housed first.
Great, thank you. It's interesting with the two reports, that there's one mostly dealing with, well, the supply-demand issues, it seems. The one...so the question, then, that you've sort of addressed, or I guess I'm left wondering, is there an issue in terms of not having in the private housing stock or in our relationship with landlords enough rent supplement units available to the city? Or, like, if you could just speak to that, is there an issue with supply there? Providing it to the shelters seems completely reasonable, and the rationale of moving people forward is also in here, though I guess I'm just wondering, is there...how does this look at or fit in with ensuring a stable supply of longer-term housing? Is there a need for that, I guess? Is there a shortage that we're trying to deal with through this? And how do we deal with it, if there is?
Mr. Leibman?
There definitely...through you, Mr. Mayor, there is a challenge, for sure, in obtaining rent supplement units in the private market. That is one hundred percent the case. However, certainly, our department has always been successful in eventually finding enough rent supplements in the community. In this case, though, we're just stressed by the time period, for sure. We have made sure through our new homeless service system that we fund a housing liaison worker, whose prime job is to continually find rent supplements in the community with private market. And that has been quite successful. As stated in the report, we've had close to sixty rent supplements since the program started, new landlords that have come on board with those units. So that has been successful, but it continues to be an area that we struggle with to ensure we have enough rent supplements.
Counselor Neal?
Thank you. One question that I just find curious, but perhaps you can address it. If you looked at the per-unit subsidy costs between home-based housing and Addiction and Mental Health Services, the home-based housing, which are receiving sixteen units, on a per-unit cost, that's a lot higher than, if my calculations are right, than what Addiction and Mental Health Services supplement per unit is. Can you tell me what kind of additional...why those additional costs are there between the two organizations?
Mr. Leibman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I actually wasn't involved at the time with the negotiation of those agreements, so I'm not privy to the history as to why they are different, but I do know those are negotiated agreements between those organizations, so I suspect that's what covers the difference in costs, but I'd have to look into that further.
And I apologize for not having that question triggered a little bit sooner, so I couldn't ask you in advance. My other question has to do with the Housing First Rapid Re-Housing Allocation. I know, and I believe other counselors have been approached from some of the current providers with concerns about issues around them being frustrated and talking about wanting to continue or not. So I guess my concern is, how are we addressing those concerns from some of those renters who stepped forward to support the program and are now, I guess, having second thoughts or feeling frustrated about that? How are we addressing those concerns? And like Counselor Holland, I'm a little concerned about whether there's enough uptake in the private sector to support the program, even with the monies that are available.
Mr. Leibman?
Through you, your worship. I think it's important to stress that we have over six hundred rent supplement units in the private market in Kingston, which is substantial. And the persons that are being housed in the Housing First model, we're always being housed through that rent supplement and our social housing program. So nothing has changed in terms of those clients eventually receiving housing, they're just receiving housing more quickly and through a more directed program. Now, how we're addressing those clients directly, though, is that we have made commitments to those rent supplement landlords that are involved in that program to...we are looking at our damage fund right now, and we will be implementing a new damage fund policy in January, where we have consulted with the landlords to ensure that it meets their expectations. So we are looking at our existing policies. This program has only been in place for a year and a half right now, so it's certainly an evolutionary thing, and we're understanding more and more as we get into it, but those are some of the policies. are some of the policies we are looking at to try to address some of the concerns from the landlords.
I guess, my other question, because I'm still, and I apologize again for not having asked the question prior to the council meeting, but I am having some hesitation about how much more it's costing us for one provider, Home-Based Housing, as compared to the other housing provider. How time-sensitive is this motion? I'm wondering if just that first resolve clause could be deferred so that we could get some answers to that question.
Mr. Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, I would like to clarify for council that we're not asking council to actually approve the funding tonight. So, that's already approved, even if council doesn't like it tonight, it's already approved, it's in place in agreements that were signed a long time ago. What we're asking council to do tonight is actually change the funding source. If council doesn't want to use the provincial money to fund something that was already approved years ago, we're still going to continue to fund it, but we're going to use city money, and we might miss out on the provincial funding. And then we'll report back to council to inform you that we unfortunately may be missed out on provincial funding. So, that's the motion that's, or the recommendation that's before you tonight. It's not about setting the level of funding for those organizations, that was done a long time ago, and it will continue to be funded. The issue is, which source of funding do we use for it over the next few years? And we're trying to maximize the provincial dollars.
No offense to the Commissioner, but that's a really frustrating answer, but it's not your fault. Is it, if you could share with all of council the rationale why one service provider is, has a much higher level of funding per unit? I think that would, for future reference, that would be helpful.
So, I'll ask for a brief response, but we really do need to focus on the recommendation that is in front of us. As has already been stated, this is a separate issue that we have already dealt with. So, Commissioner Hurdle, I'll ask for a brief response, please, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we can definitely pull out the old agreements that were signed and provide that information to council, either by email or through an information report, in terms of the rationale that was put forward at that time when those agreements were approved.
That would be great. Thank you.
Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. More a comment, it's my understanding that the City of Kingston is one of the leaders in the whole rent supplement-type program in the City of Kingston, and certainly in the homelessness plan that we initiated. And I'm really pleased to see, and have for a long time, the way staff do pay close attention to revenue streams and make sure that we are always maximizing external dollars, because I find they do a fabulous job. I suspect we will find that the Mental Health Association has different forms of funding, because they tend to have quite a few more than a group like Home-Based Housing. So, I am fully in support of this, and thank staff very much for being so careful with our dollars and taking them from appropriate other levels of government. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 10 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. My pleasure to present Report Number 10 from the Planning Committee for council's consideration. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Neal, that Report Number 10 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So, there are two clauses. Unless anyone would like them separated, we will vote on them together. So, Clause 1, it's approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, 22 Davidson Street. Clause 2, approval of an application for official plan and zoning bylaw amendment, 1138 Sunnyside Road and 1397 Sinnum Road. Call the vote. And that carries. Report Number 11 from Heritage Kingston.
Thank you, Your Worship. I rise to report, to present Report Number 11 from Heritage Kingston, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Shell, for council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Shell, that Report Number 11 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
Okay, so, we of course have the two components of the report. Number 1, applications recommended for approval statutory consultation. And number 2, applications supported for approval by Heritage Kingston, which is the non-statutory consultation. Seeing no separations, Counselor Shell.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a comment on 1 and 2.
On 1 and 2.
Item 1.
Yes. Item, number 1, 1 and 2.
Item number 1, 1 and 2. Okay, so first, we will deal with item, with Clause 1, which is the applications recommended for approval. And then, so, Counselor Shell, you can have the floor then to speak to item 1 and item 2.
Thank you. Just a comment in relation to some comments that have been going around about our heritage. I would just like to point out that there's a listing, a number of properties that are going to be listed, and other two properties designated. And just to congratulate us on funding consultants, to help city staff, our Heritage Properties Working Group, to bring forward many properties in the last two years, many more than have been for quite a number of years, to show that this council is very activist in identifying and protecting heritage properties. And I think we all need to pat ourselves on the back and thank staff for really a wonderful job in increasing the protection of our properties. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll call the vote then on items 1 and 2 together. And that carries. Report Number 12 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
It's my honor to present Report Number 12 from the Administrative Policies Committee, duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Counselor Camden, seconded by Counselor Osannick, that Report Number 12 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There's just the one item, revisions to the private property parking bylaw and request for delegated authority. And that carries. Report Number 13 from Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present Report Number 13 from Committee of the Whole and ask for its ratification by council. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that Report Number 13 from the Committee of the Whole be received and adopted.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment?
I believe there's a variety of point of order that will need to step out.
So, just planning out around the declared conflicts of interest here. So, first, we will take the vote on item 1, 2, and 3. And Deputy Mayor Bohm has stepped away, so we will call the vote. Again, this is just on approval of the 2017 operating budgets for the municipal utilities, approval of rate changes for 2017 for miscellaneous charges in the appliance rental business, and approval of local distribution rate changes for natural gas. And that carries. Number 4, deliberations and approval of the municipal operating and capital budgets. Mr. Clerk.
So, Mr. Mayor, dealing with the peculiar interests on this one here, we'll take seven votes to complete this item. So, the first vote will be taken on paragraphs 1, 6, 7, 8, and 9, and I'll read them out just for the benefit of everybody. So, paragraph 1 reads, "The council approved the 2017 general municipal tax-supported operating budget in the amount of $349,477,039, of which $359,166,362 less $9,689,323 approved in recommendations 2, 3, 4, and 5." And paragraph 6, which reads, "That any variance between the final assessment growth and the growth estimates included in the 2017 general municipal operating budget be transferred to funded from the working fund reserve to offset unanticipated variances in assessment growth in future years as a stabilization measure." And paragraph 7, which reads, "The council approved the 2017 municipal capital budget as follows: Proposed capital expenditures, $43,86,546. The financing, general municipal reserve fund, $34,311,517. Working fund reserve, $85,645,000. Government grants, $8661,570. Contributions from others, $27,814. Total financing, $43,86,546." And paragraph 8, "The council received the following, provided as part of the budget documentation: A, 15-year capital expenditure forecast; B, capital works in progress listing as of September 30, 2016; C, municipal reserve fund scheduled continuity." And paragraph 9, being the final paragraph, "That the city treasurer be authorized to report the approved budget estimates for 2017 in accordance with Public Sector Accounting Board reporting requirements as an attachment to the bylaw." Now, everybody's eligible to vote on that one.
And that carries.
The next vote will be on paragraph 2A. Counselor Hutchison has a conflict, so he will leave. And the paragraph reads, "The council approved the following 2017 general municipal operating budget item: A, community services, housing and social services, administration and employment assistance in the amount of $244,676 for employment support expenses." Please vote.
That carries.
The next vote will be on paragraph 2B, and for this one, Counselor Hutchison and Counselor Camden have conflicts. The paragraph reads, "The council approved the following 2017 general municipal operating budget item: B, community services, housing and social services, rent supplement, and nonprofit housing providers in the amount of $680,996."
That carries.
For paragraph 3, Counselor Camden has a conflict. Counselor Hutchison can return. And the paragraph reads, "The council approved the following 2017 general municipal operating budget item: A, community services, housing and social services, community services, investment and provincial programs in the amount of $895,109."
That carries.
Paragraph 4, Counselor Holland has a conflict. Paragraph reads, "The council approved under agencies and boards the Kingston Economic Development Corporation 2017 budget in the amount of $1,418,542."
That carries.
The next paragraph, Counselors Neal and Stroud have conflicts. Paragraph 5 reads as follows, "The council approved the Hospital Foundation 2017 budget transfer in the amount of $1,050,000." And the final paragraph, Counselors Bohm, Hutchison, Camden, Holland, Neal, and Stroud have conflicts.
Does Counselor Camden have a conflict?
Paragraph 10 reads, "That the necessary bylaws be established to formally adopt these estimates and be given three readings at the December 20, 2016 meeting of council." Please vote.
And that carries, 6 to 0. Just in case anyone's wondering, we do still have quorum.
And that completes the voting for the capital operating budget, so everybody can return back.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome back, everybody. Okay, so we have nothing else under Committee of the Whole. Information report, we have one tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of October 2016. Okay, we have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we have a couple of motions. Number 1, that the resignation of Max Nollet from the Arts Advisory Committee be accepted with regret. Can I have a mover and seconder? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Hutchison. And that carries. Number 2, that council affirmed the appointment of Jane Cargis, Managing Director of Juvenice Festival, to the Arts Advisory Committee as a technical representative with a term ending November 30, 2018. Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Shell. And that carries. Onto new motions. New motion number 1, moved by Counselor Camden, seconded by Counselor Holland. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club expanded its operations and service delivery in the West End by leasing space at the Frontenac Mall in 2015, and whereas the Frontenac Mall has taxed it, the commercial rate and Boys and Girls Club have applied and were denied by IMPAC for change in property class for the space they occupy from commercial to residential. Whereas the commercial tax rate is not sustainable for the Boys and Girls Club to ensure long-term service delivery in the West End, whereas the city has been investing in expanding its community services in the north and east areas of the city, therefore be it resolved that council direct staff to review options to establish a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. and Girls Club to provide financial support in exchange for community services in order to minimize the impact of paying taxes at the commercial rate, and that staff report back to council during Q1 of 2017. Counselor Camden.
Thank you, through you. I'd like to start off by saying that this motion actually started about two years ago, right when I got on council. I spoke to the people at the Boys and Girls Club, and they had mentioned the kind, I guess you'd call it the predicament that they're in. With a facility like this, usually you have three things involved, the city, the building, and the organization. In this particular situation, the organization was painted into a bit of a corner because they don't own the building. They took advantage of the fact that there is a absolutely tremendous facility, which is 55,000 square feet of beautiful, perfectly located building that is perfect for their use. However, it is owned by somebody else. Just to crunch some numbers, if the city were to build something at 55,000 square feet, a community center or a community hub that we could benefit from, it would probably cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of $50 to $20 million to build this and benefit from it. So, the tax exemption is a small thing that we can do to create a partnership with this organization and benefit, that the whole community benefits from. It's the only dedicated space, I believe, in the community just for youth. So, if you look at the YMCA or something like that, if a kid wants to go play basketball, they're playing with adults, youth, it's a whole mixed bag. This is just dedicated for youth, and their services are free. There's forty, the Boys and Girls Club have forty different pickup stations where they bus kids from across the city to their locations. So, every single councillor in all districts are benefiting from this. They promote education and physical activity. So, when I was there last time, they were talking about educating kids and not drinking pop and stuff like that. Ironically, I think I had just finished drinking a pop. And they were talking about physical activities, so a lot of kids who don't have necessarily the opportunities that other kids have, they can go there and kind of be themselves. So, it's a very safe place for all kids, it's very inviting. But the great thing about this is that there's other larger community benefits as well. So, right now, it's kind of a West End hub for swimming. I know when I was growing up in the West End of Kingston, we actually had Celebrity Sports World, and it was kind of a place where a lot of kids went and hung out and just acted as kids. I did that myself, and that's not there anymore. So, this is actually fulfilling a bit of a function for creating a safe place for kids to be and play. But it's also a space that the city can capitalize on, such a tremendous, beautiful space where, you know, we're doing things like public swimming lessons and stuff like that. It's also a space where the seniors have actually, from the Senior Centre on Francis Street, they've used it for guitar lessons, dancing lessons, things of that nature, and pickleball, sorry. Yeah, I don't want to get in trouble for not mentioning pickleball. Thanks for that. And there's also stuff like Police Athletic League, where the police come and host basketball games and stuff like that for youth, so kids become familiar with the police and have a bit of a relationship. I could go on and on and on and on about the benefits of this and how it makes sense. But I think it's pretty self-explanatory that I think an organization like this is extremely beneficial to the community. It makes good financial sense to support these people, and I hope that you support this motion.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Stroud?
I just have a question to staff. I support the intent, I just have a question to staff about the method used to offer something to them. Can we just designate whatever tax rate we like, different designation at any time? Could we just sort of do this? Like, is this something that is an option to us in any location, just changing the rate from one class to another?
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, through your worship. So, we actually are not using the tax process to do this, so no, the answer to the question is no, we cannot do that. And because of that, there's no other process for us in terms of an adjustment to the taxes and the tax rate or the assessment value. And so, this is an alternative in terms of a granting process, but not a grant, it's more of a payment for services is what we're trying to look at.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add to that, that the structure that we would most likely look at would be something along the lines of a purchase of, what we call a purchase of service. So, basically, it's funding that the city is providing, but in return is buying some type of community services. And we would structure it so that it would minimize the impact, the financial impact for the organization.
Okay, so just as a follow-up, so the solution that is open to us is an equivalent reduction in the sense we'd still have to collect the full amount of tax, but they would get a grant in return, and that is something that we can do on an ad hoc basis. Is that correct?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so yes, we can structure that, like I said, through a purchase of service agreement.
As long as there's a service or an item that we're getting, we can, okay, I got it, thanks.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Hutchison.
Basically got my answer. I want, the words tax exemption escaped Counselor Camden's lips, and I wanted to be sure that that was not the case. But we've done this before, I think for others as I remember, so I'm happy to support this. And I take it it'll be the difference between the commercial and the residential rate that we'll be trying to cover. They'll still be paying some kind of taxes, right?
Ms. Kennedy.
Relative to their status.
Yes, through your worship, that's correct. They still will be paying their tax. It's actually billed through the owner of the property, and they're a tenant of that, so they'll be paying at a commercial rate. They're also eligible for the 40% charity reduction on that, so they'll be paying normally what they would.
That's good to hear. Personally, I think everyone should pay taxes, but they're not necessarily the same rate because of the public goods they're doing. So, I support the intention of the motion, and I think it's a good thing to be supporting. So, I'll vote for it, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Great, I applaud the mover and the seconder. This is a really worthy, worthy motion, and I totally support it. Just a quick cautionary tale, there will be other, less worthy organizations that will seek some kind of tax relief. And I just want to be, go on record as saying that I support this, given all of the good work that was mentioned by the mover, but I have a lot of reservations about other organizations that may be seeking similar relief.
CAO Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just to add to some of the previous comments by staff. So, while coincidentally, the numbers may work out to the differential in taxes, the real issue here is a service agreement for services that will be provided that the city currently doesn't offer. So, to the councillor's comment, there may very well be those circumstances, but we, that's why the tax policies are as they are, so there are no abilities to make one-off exemptions, and so you have to come to a creative way to find solutions for service. And in this case, we have, we have some, have done some work with the Boys and Girls Club in the past, and we know that there is some gaps in service that we can work on, as the commissioner has intended to do.
And they're a very, very worthy service provider already, so supporting them makes total sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. I support this. My question just to staff is, for their swimming facilities, do we have a purchase-of-service agreement with them right now, that they're providing us some time for city lessons?
Commissioner Hurdle.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we currently are buying a number of hours in terms of the swimming facility, and we're providing programs there. But obviously, we would look at ways to expand on that and other types of programs or services that might be available.
That's great to hear, because they do have a great swimming facility, and we don't have our West End Aquatic Center, and so this can fill one of the gaps that our CAO was just mentioning. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote on new motion one. And that carries. Number two, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren. Whereas on October 26, 2016, the KFLNA Board of Health passed the following motion, that the KFLNA Board of Health urged the provincial government to implement taxation of sugar-sweetened beverages at 20% or greater, and to direct the monies collected through this tax to province-wide efforts to promote healthy eating and prevent obesity, and that this correspondence be sent to, number one, the Honorable Charles Soussen, Provincial Minister of Finance; number two, the Honorable Dr. Eric Hoskins, Provincial Minister of Health and Long-Term Care; number three, the Honorable Kathleen Wynn, Premier of Ontario. Therefore be it resolved that the council of the City of Kingston hereby supports the aforementioned motion, and that this motion be circulated to the aforementioned Ontario Ministers, Kingston and the Islands MPP Sophie Koala, and leaders of both Ontario opposition parties, and that this motion be forwarded to all municipalities bordering on Kingston and those with populations greater than 40,000 for their consideration. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. This was a motion that, right up until the second, whereas there be a resolve clause, was passed unanimously at the Board of Health. And it's, it's an extremely important initiative as we look towards ways of reducing obesity, reducing all kinds of other things. The fact that sugared soft drinks cost less than bottled water is troubling in our community, and the consequences are serious. As a public educator, I know school boards have moved towards removing those products from schools, but I think this is a very, very important motion that addresses and seeks the province to take some kind of a leadership role in this and addressing this. New York City and other jurisdictions in both Canada and the US have passed similar legislation. I think this is incumbent upon the province to do something towards addressing this really serious health issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote. And that carries. We do have a third new motion. I'm going to turn the chair over to the Deputy Mayor for that one.
So, new motion number three, so that the consent of council, oh, sorry, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm, that council declare the office of councillor for District One countryside vacant, and that staff be directed to bring forward a report outlining options to fill the vacancy for consideration by council at its meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 24, 2017. I'm assuming you'd like to speak to it, your worship. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, I think that we have all noticed that there is an empty chair around the horseshoe tonight, and I know that I speak for all of council when I would say that we would congratulate former councillor Allen on his new position with the County of Frontenac, and also express regret that certainly his voice and presence will be missed here at council. I think that going forward, our biggest concern is how we can best minimize the disruption to residents of Countryside District. So, I think we do need to move forward to find his replacement. So, this motion does two things. First of all, it would formally declare his seat vacant, which is the first step that we need to take as council to look for a replacement. Second of all, it's to, this motion's asking staff to report back to us with information in regards to the options that we have as council with how to fill that seat. So, I have had the opportunity to discuss this briefly with the clerk, and my understanding is that there are three options that are available to us. We can appoint the second-place finisher from the last election, we can initiate an appointments process where we would take applications, and we can also hold a by-election. But I think that in order to understand those options, we need information back on everything from the cost, but also to the timeframe, and I think that that's important information for us to have. So, as you can see, the motion is asking for the clerk to report back to us at our meeting on the 24th, at which point we would then make that decision on which option is the best. So, for that reason, I certainly look to council and hope for unanimous support moving forward so that we can restore the 13th vote on council. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Neal.
Yes, and I want to thank the mayor for publicly stating that he'll take on the additional duties of representing countryside until a subsequent appointment is made, which I think is very good for the residents of that district. And I just want to say that, and I shared this with former councillor Allen when he spoke to me about this yesterday, I believe it was. I, even when we didn't agree, I appreciated the amount of thoughtful consideration he gave to issues, and so I jokingly said to him, whenever we disagreed, one of us was thoughtfully wrong, and sometimes I'm sure that was me as well. So, but I appreciate the work that he did for his constituents, and I, the only question I have regarding this is, I'm assuming, and perhaps the mayor or the clerk can respond to this, I'm assuming what will come forward will likely be consideration with options defined and kind of costed out, but it would be up to council to decide on which option we should adopt. Is that a kind of accurate expectation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that would be accurate, yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Stroud?
Yes, I have a question. So, aware of some of those options, from my knowledge of, I guess, other municipalities or past happenings, I know at one point here in Kingston, the mayor resigned and was replaced by a councillor in the interim, like a new mayor, an interim mayor or a new mayor had to be selected from a hat. Yes, it was, the name was, because of a tie vote, the name was drawn from a hat. Historic moment here in this chamber. But anyways, with that knowledge, I was sort of brainstorming what possibilities there might be in anticipation of this motion, and I was just going to ask the question, is it an option? Because we now have a system where the deputy mayor rotates on a two-month term and represents, his worship, when his worship can't attend a function, for example, it acts as the mayor, the acting mayor, when the mayor's not available. Is that an option in, on an interim basis, to have either the deputy mayor or a member of council on a rotating basis represent countryside? Is that even an option?
That's not an option. We've contemplated, as you've heard, Mayor Patterson indicated that he would do an excellent job also representing that district, so that's not a path we are planning to go down.
So, it's possible that if he's off, at a district function in countryside, the deputy mayor is somewhere else in Kingston at a function the mayor would have otherwise been at. So, in the end result, deputy mayor might have a higher workload as well. Just pointing out that possibility. I'm looking forward to the option report and having a good discussion. I don't think any of us know at this point what the result of that debate's going to be, and I would like to keep my mind open until we have that debate. I may have said something, some things publicly today, what my preference might be, but actually I'd like to state now that I would like to have the debate before we decide, and so I applaud this motion, I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stroud. Is there anybody else that would like to speak and say how thankful they are for former councillor Allen's service? Counselor Holland?
Of course, and thank you through you, and thank you to councillor, former councillor Allen for his work and his friendship. I guess, so, question, first I'll state that also I spoke publicly today on the options and sort of projected preferences, which I think may have been misconstrued, and that my point was that I thought the people of Countryside should have some say. my point was that I thought the people of Countryside should have some say, and of course, that gives people the impression that I'm in favor of a by-election. I think, as Councillor Stroud has pointed out, of course, I am open and interested in all the information that's going to be coming our way. I would, though, like to know if there would be some way of hearing, let's say, like in the interim, because we have a ways to go here now, if countryside residents are contacting the mayor's office or the clerk on this issue, if that is going to automatically be forwarded to all members of council, because I think that would be important information to have as we look at those options. Thank you.
Yes, councillor, wow. Your worship.
So, thank you for that question, and yes, I would be more than happy to forward any correspondence that comes to me from residents expressing opinions or thoughts on which option would be best. I'll make sure that that's circulated to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we will call the vote. And that passes unanimously, and I'll return the chair to you.
Thank you very much. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for minutes, please.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor George, that the minutes of city council meeting number 2017-01, held Tuesday, December 6, 2016, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications, other business. I think I'd just like to take a moment to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. It's been a great year, so I just want to thank council and staff for all their work over the last year, and also to invite everyone to the very first Sesquicentennial event of 2017. That is our very special New Year's levy that we have planned here at Memorial Hall from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on January the 1st. So, look forward, obviously, to seeing council and members of the public there for that. So, with that, call for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor, bylaws. And it's going to take a while, too, isn't it? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Sorry, we're stuck for a while. Mr. Clerk, take it away.
I tried, I tried.
And I will apologize for the delay in adjournment, because we have quite a few bylaw votes with the pecuniaries that have been declared tonight, so I will let you know when they come up. So, the first five bylaw votes, councillor Camden has a pecuniary. Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaws 1, 2, 11, 12, and 13 be given their first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaws 11, 12, and 13 be given their third reading.
Two more to vote, please. That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaw 7 be given its first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw 7 three readings.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaw 7 be given its third reading.
That carries.
Okay, councillor Camden can return to the meeting. The next, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Councillor Bohm, you have a conflict for the next six bylaw votes. There will be additional. Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaws 14 and 15 be
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws 14 and 15 three readings.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaws 14 and 15 be given their third reading.
That carries.
Okay, for this bylaw vote, in addition to Deputy Mayor Bohm, councillors Camden, Holland, Hutchinson, Neil, and Stroud also have pecuniary. Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaw 16 be given its first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw 16 three readings.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaw 16 be given its third reading.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaws 3 through 6 be given their first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaws 8 through 10 and 17 through 21 be given their first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that a clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw 17 three readings.
That carries.
This is our last bylaw vote. Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Ossanek, that bylaws 8 through 10 and 17 through 21 be given their third reading.
That carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Turner. That carries. Thank you very much.